And call the Metropolitan Planning Commission to order for the February twenty seventh, twenty twenty five meeting. Thank you all for coming down. It's a pleasure to have everybody here. So first on our agenda, Commissioners, is item B, which is the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Pose no, ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted. Next is item C, which is the approval of the February thirteenth, twenty twenty five minutes, and that was also sent out to you beforehand, Commissioners. And so is there a motion to adopt the minutes? There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Pose no, ayes have it, and the minutes are adopted. Next is the recognition of the council members. I saw some former council members, but no. We always have former council members. Appreciate the former council members coming down. If they come in, we'll recognize the council members as they come in. Council lady again will always know that we take good care of the council members. All right. So item E, which is the items for deferral withdrawal. Who's going to take us through it? Go ahead.
Okay. Our items for deferral or withdrawal tonight are, starting on page three of your agenda, item number one, twenty twenty four S P zero zero three zero zero one, Burkitt Corner. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number two, twenty twenty four S P zero three six zero zero one, eight three two West Trinity. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March twenty seventh Planning Commission meeting. On page four of your agenda, item number three, twenty twenty four S P zero four eight zero zero one, forty two twenty two and forty two seventy eight Central Pike. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March twenty seventh Planning Commission meeting. Item number four, twenty twenty four S P zero four nine zero zero one, fifty six forty two Valley View S P. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March thirteenth Planning Commission meeting. Item number six, twenty twenty four S P zero five five zero zero one, Veritas Corner S P. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March thirteenth Planning Commission meeting. Item number seven, twenty twenty five S P zero zero five zero zero one, Martin and Merritt. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March thirteenth Planning Commission meeting. On page five of your agenda, item number nine, twenty twenty five S P zero zero seven zero zero one, thirteen nine oh five Old Hickory Boulevard. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March thirteenth Planning Commission meeting. Item number ten, twenty twenty five S P zero zero nine zero zero one, ten zero four and eleven oh four Cass Street. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March thirteenth Planning Commission meeting. Item number twelve, twenty twenty two S two two zero 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 one, thirty eight sixty two Hudson Avenue. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March thirteenth Planning Commission meeting. On page six of your agenda, item number thirteen, twenty twenty four S one one five zero zero one, Monroe Park Phase One. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March thirteenth Planning Commission meeting. Item number fourteen, twenty twenty four S one three nine zero zero one, Shular Clarksville Highway. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March twenty seventh Planning Commission meeting. Item number fifteen, twenty twenty four Z zero six nine P R zero zero one. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March thirteenth Planning Commission meeting. Item number sixteen, twenty twenty four Z one two five P R zero zero one. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April tenth Planning Commission meeting. On page seven of your agenda, item number nineteen, twenty twenty five N H C zero zero one zero zero one Marlin Meadows. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April twenty fourth Planning Commission meeting. And that concludes the items for deferral withdrawal.
Thank you, Matt. And so Commissioners, and Matt, make sure we get these correct. These are the following items for deferral withdrawal. Item number one, two, three, four, six, seven, nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and nineteen. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, Commissioners, you've heard the items for deferral withdrawal. Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Pose no, ayes have it, and those items are deferred or withdrawn. So now we are on item F, but let's go ahead and Council Lady, I saw you come in out of the corner of our eye, my eye, and I knew you were coming. And so welcome. Glad you could come down.
Do this. Is that working? Awesome. Tanya Hancock, Council member for District Nine, Madison, Tennessee. I wanted to comment on two items on your agenda. I think the numbers are number nineteen and number twenty. Number nineteen is the conservation overlay for Marlin Meadows, which was approved last week at the Metro historic zoning committee with six in favor, one against, and one abstention because one of the members also owns property in that neighborhood. And we're super excited about it. I'm sad about the deferral, but I'm going to turn it into a win because we're working on getting an official petition with the signatures from all the supporters in the neighborhood, which is a large majority that we'll be able to get, if not full majority. We also have a surprise coming, so I hope to be able to share that with you on April twenty fourth regarding that neighborhood. On item twenty, I agree with your recommendation, so thank you very much for your consideration, and have a good day. Thanks for having me butt into the agenda. Sorry about being late.
Thank you, Council Lady. The traffic is horrible. I blame it on the Planning Commission, but that's, I'm just kidding. Some people do. Wrong department, that's what I'm gonna say. All right. Next, and so Council Lady, on, so let's just, you are, on twenty, you support the disapproval. Is that correct? Okay. All right. So now we are on item F, which is the consent agenda. And Matt, you're gonna take us through that?
Yes. All right. Items noted on the agenda as consent tentative will be read aloud at the beginning of the meeting to determine if there is opposition present. If there is opposition present, please raise your hand, and the item will be taken off the tentative consent agenda and placed on the agenda to be heard in which they are listed on the agenda. If no opposition is present, the item will be placed on the consent agenda. As noticed to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. Starting on page four of your agenda, item number five, twenty twenty four S P zero five one zero zero one Nashville Event Center. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the agenda to be heard. On page five of your agenda, item number eight, twenty twenty five S P zero zero six zero zero one Briarwood Townhome S P. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the agenda to be heard. Item number eleven, twenty twenty five S P zero one one zero zero one six hundred McFerrin Avenue. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. On page six of your agenda, item number seventeen, twenty twenty five Z zero zero two P R zero zero one. This is a rezoning on East Morland Street. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. On page seven of your agenda, item number eighteen, twenty twenty five S P zero one four zero zero one, two zero nine and two one one Walton Lane. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the agenda to be heard. Item number twenty one, twenty twenty five Z zero one six P R zero zero one. This is a rezoning on Old Hickory Boulevard. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the agenda to be heard. Item number twenty two, twenty twenty five Z zero one seven P R zero zero one. This is a rezoning, rezoning on Lewis Street. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number twenty three, twenty twenty five Z zero two zero P R zero zero one. This is a rezoning on North Fifth Street. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the agenda to be heard. Okay. Now I will read through the items on the consent agenda with their full caption. As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with a decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within sixty days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. On page five of your agenda, item number eleven, twenty twenty five S P zero one one zero zero one six hundred McFerrin Avenue. This is a request to rezone from R S five to S P zoning for property located at six hundred McFerrin Avenue to permit daycare home use. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions, including the updated commission, conditions and the memo provided to the Planning Commission. On page six of your agenda, item number seventeen, twenty twenty five Z zero zero two P R zero zero one. This is a request to rezone from R S five to R six A for property located at one twenty seven East Morland Street. Staff recommendation is to approve. On page seven of your agenda, item number twenty two, twenty twenty five Z zero one seven P R zero zero one. This is a request to rezone from I W D to M U L A N S zoning for property at twelve forty five Lewis Street. Staff recommendation is to approve. And on page eight of your agenda, under H, Other Business, item number twenty seven, accept the director's report and approve administrative items.
Thank you, Matt. And so Commissioners, on the consent agenda, and Matt, make sure we get these correct, even though there's not a lot. Items number eleven, seventeen, twenty two, and twenty seven.
That is correct.
All right, Commissioners, you've heard the four items for, to approve on the consent agenda. Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Pose no, ayes have it, and those items are approved on the consent agenda. And so Commissioners, that leaves us six items to be heard, and that will be items number five, eight, eighteen, twenty, twenty one, and twenty three. And so before we get started, many of you have been here before, some of you have not. We always ask if everybody will silence their phones while we enter the, the public hearing part of the meeting. We'll start with the staff presentation, then we'll open the public hearing for the item, and then the applicant gets ten minutes to speak. They can save two of the ten minutes for, for a rebuttal, and then we'll do everyone in support, and then we'll do everyone in opposition, and then we'll do the rebuttal of the council member, and then we'll, we'll do our deliberation as, as the Planning Commission. So let's go ahead and start with item number five.
Okay. I'm Matt Schank, and I'll be presenting item number five on today's agenda. This is a request to rezone property along Nolan'sville Pike from A R two A to S P to permit a mixed-use development. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The site consists of two parcels with a combined acreage of approximately eight point zero nine acres located on the eastern side of Nolan'sville Pike. The surrounding parcels are zoned R fifteen, R twenty, R M nine, and S C N. Neighboring uses include a mix of single-family residential, multifamily residential, commercial, and community uses. The proposed S P is located within the T three suburban community center policy, T three neighborhood evolving policy, and conservation policy areas. The T three C C policy is intended to create enhanced suburban community centers and provide services to draw from the surrounding community. The policy slide, policy map on the slide reflects the recent policy amendment approved by the Planning Commission, changing the land use policy from T four urban neighborhood evolving to T three C C and T three N E. The site contains areas of T three N E policy, which are not proposed to be developed with any buildings. The areas of conservation policy are limited to a stream buffer and areas of steep slopes, which are preserved on this plan. The site plan consists of several buildings allowing for non-residential uses. Two of the buildings identified as Buildings A and B are located near the front of the site along Nolan'sville Pike and allow for general office, retail, and restaurant uses. Located in the center of the site is a larger structure identified as Building C, allowing for up to thirty thousand square feet for commercial and amusement inside uses. And six smaller buildings, each six hundred and twenty-five square feet identified as Building D, utilized as part of the event center for storage and staging areas. The red line on this plan shows the policy boundary between the T three C C policy to the west and T three N E policy to the east. All of the buildings would be limited in height to two stories and thirty-five feet and have architectural design requirements. Vehicular access to the site is provided by centrally located drive from Nolan'sville Pike between Buildings A and B. Parking for the buildings will be located off the centrally located drive. A gated entrance for fire access only is located at the southern terminus of the private, of private drive, which connects to Althorp Way at the southwest corner of the site. On the northeast corner of the site, Foxview Drive is proposed to extend from its current terminus into a turnaround shown on the circles on these plans. No vehicular access from Foxview Drive to the site is included in this plan. The site includes a twenty-foot type C landscaping buffer along the northern property lines. Staff is recommending a condition of approval to include a twenty-foot type C landscaping buffer along the southern property lines. Development is located outside of the heavily forced areas on the northeastern portion of the site. Staff reviewed the plan against the guidance for the T three suburban community center policy and found that the plan incorporates design characteristics consistent with the policy, providing uses consistent with the land use policy and a suburban development form. The plan also meets the guidance for the conservation policy by preserving conservation features on the site, including stream buffers and areas of steep slopes. With that, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions.
Thank you, Matt. And so we'll go ahead and open this item for public hearing. Is the applicant in the room? Welcome. You have ten minutes, and you can save two of the ten minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Michael Garrigan. I'm an engineer with Dell and Associates, five one six Heather Place. Represent the owners, Bala and Vidya of this property. My clients bought this property, one, it's two lots. They bought one in fourteen, one in fifteen, and we've been working with them since then. The initial obvious choice, when you look at the blown-out map, you see the, the highest intense part of Lennox Village to the south, four to, three to four units per acre, single family detached to the north. Seems like a transition lot. The prior policy was urban neighborhood evolving. So we looked at several different townhome type layouts, most of them around nine or ten units an acre, and we knew that Althorp Way, which is the stub road from Lennox Village, and Foxview Drive, which was the stub road from Hunter's Branch, would have to be connected. My client is a, a very thoughtful man, quite honestly, and he has sat on this, almost to the point of annoyance. But he, he, he realizes the major infrastructure deficiency of this area is, is Nolan'sville Pike. It's traffic. It is one of the worst in Davidson County. T dot's currently widening it. Hopefully that helps alleviate quite a bit. But that was his major concern, was the traffic. And kind of at the same time, he, he's, he's from India. He's of Indian descent, so he goes to a lot of weddings, and a lot of them are in these outskirts, not even suburban, the rural areas, you know, the, the cabin, the lake out front, that kind of thing, outdoor venue type. And, you know, he kind of got annoyed with the long drive, and he said, why don't we have anything that's more convenient? That's when I said, you know, no A M P M peak volume traffic. Major, you know, the, the, the heavy traffic times are gonna be weekends. If it's a weekday, it's gonna be, you know, seven P M, not four to six. There's not gonna be ninety households leaving the site at, between six and eight A M every day. I said, it, it sounds like a really good idea. And, and that's kind of how we, we headed down this path. The technical code term is commute, commercial amusement inside. The intent is a wedding venue, birthday parties, things like that. We, we had a community meeting last fall with Andrea with staff about the policy change from the urban neighborhood evolving to the suburban community center. A lot came out of that. At the time, we had an outdoor venue, which I thought was really cool because it, it slopes down by the creek, so we had the, the altar down at the bottom, and it was gonna be like natural stadium seating. Great ideas. The devil's always in the details. You know, the noy, you know. When it got down to it, working with Matt and the staff, trying to appease as many as we could, outdoor venues off the table. There's no outdoor music allowed, there's no outdoor venue allowed. The other thing was those six little cabins that you see there. Another idea we had was to have these little six hundred square foot cabins for overnight stay for the, the bridesmaids and the groomsmen. Overnight stay became an item of issue, so that now is off the table. Those are only for day of event staging, you know, for the, for the bride and the groomsmen to get ready in one, groom and the groomsmen to get ready in one, bride and the bridesmaids get ready in the other. And then, of course, you know, the two stub roads, emergency access only to Althorp. It'll have a fire marshal governed crash gate on it. And Foxview, we originally had a cul-de-sac on that, one of the giant N dot, hundred and twenty-six foot diameter cul-de-sacs, and then had it closed off from our property. The community next door had concerns about people just leaving their cars there, dumping their junk there, so that's been converted into a Hammerhead type thing to kind of screen it, so you don't see the big giant cul-de-sac coming through the neighborhood. We, through that community meeting, we agreed to twenty-foot buffers around the entire property, six-foot opaque fence around the entire property. I think the, the kid might have been twelve years old, but he mentioned, what about the construction workers wandering into our neighborhood? I mean, great, well-spoken, great little kid. I was like, this is, that's a great idea. So we've agreed and put a note on there that the fence go up on the front end, not on the tail end, to keep everything confined into the, into the site. So at the end of the day, you know, it's, it's, I think it's a neat project. It's, it's something that's gonna have over two-thirds green space. It's not going to affect the traffic nearly, nearly as much as, you know, any form of residential, quite frankly, would. And it's financially, financially feasible for my client. We're doing things like split-level buildings. All three of the, the main buildings are one story on one side, two on the other, to work with the topography, follow the land, preserving the green space as much of the tree canopy as humanly possible. And with that, I'll wrap up by saying, you know, I think from that meeting, I've, I kept an email list, I've emailed out plans as we've updated them to, to the folks on that list. I haven't heard any opposition from that. Councilman Rutherford, I believe, has sent you a letter of his support. And Randy Knolls, the H O A president from Lennox Village, has told me that the board is, that Lennox Village Homeowners Association Board is in support of this as well, primarily because we're not hooking into Althorp Way and because we'll have such a low traffic demand compared to the P M, A M P M hours. So that, I'll reserve three minutes for rebuttal, and thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll reserve two minutes for rebuttal. And is anyone wishing to speak in support of the project? Come on up. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up. Welcome, and then state your name and where you're from. We used to require address, but...
I'll give an address. My name is Lisa Rothman, and we own a condo that is right up against this property, seven two two three Althorp Way, number N two. So our condo not only is right on the property line, it actually faces where this facility will be. And I know I have spoken a lot with Matt, and I appreciate the question, you know, the questions he's answered. Originally, when I saw this, there were three bungalows. Now I'm looking at six structures, and I think one of the biggest concerns I've had was obviously the tree line, because it's really nice to look out and be able to see trees, and I was worried about what we would be seeing with this. Also, something I don't know if you guys can appreciate, it's private property. There's a barbed wire fence on our side. There's no way for me to even visualize this property and see what it's gonna look like. So it's hard for me. The only thing I've seen so far is your site, what do you call this, the site map. We haven't even seen an architectural rendering yet. Maybe one exists? I haven't seen it. And so I would just think before an approval would happen, and you mentioned weddings and, you know, in India, the last time I went to a wedding outdoor, we went out to the country too. We got loud. Ubers were involved. And, you know, I'm just wondering, if there's weddings going on, we don't have an architectural rendering, just what is gonna be going on outside? I'm having it, I'm having a hard time believing this is not gonna extend outside. And people, you know, not only live at home, they also work from home. So what's this gonna, how's this gonna affect us? So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, two-minute rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, my name's Michael Garrigan with Dell and Associates. You know, I definitely understand the concerns. I mean, right now, it's, it's, it's woods. It's, it's beautiful. We're, we're trying to soften that, you know, the, the change as much as possible. The, the twenty-foot buffer will help with that. We are sitting the backside of the building, Building C, the, the main building, which its two-story part is actually down on the topography. It's terraced down. So in reality, from the Lennox View side, you're seeing a one-story building. So you may even look right over it. Or if you're at ground level, there's a six-foot fence that you won't, you know, see over. Guess what I'm trying to say is the building, Building C is going to sit lower than the fence on the property line, so you're not going to be able to see over it. Now, it's, it's not gonna be the acres and acres of woods, but two-thirds of the property will. So ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do not see the council member here, so seeing no one else wishing to speak, I'd declare the public hearing closed. Vice Chair, you wanna go first?
Sure. So, I mean, I think in general, I support staff's recommendation here. I think the applicant rightly acknowledged the challenge that we always have when a beautiful couple parcels of open space is proposed to be redeveloped, and this is definitely a higher intensity use, I guess, or a bigger change, having a, a potential wedding, wedding event place there. But I also think that it sounds like the applicant's been responsive to the concerns and shifting everything indoors and removing the overnight stay accommodations. And, you know, looking at the surrounding area, there is a fair amount of other commercial, you know, right down the road, so this seems like it basically fits in with, with what's happening on, on this portion of Nolan'sville Road. And while it will be potentially a, you know, a lot going on on Saturdays and Sundays, it doesn't seem like overall this will be such a hard adjustment into the neighborhood, given the use will be limited to, not, not something that's heavily used seven days a week. So I support staff's recommendation.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Is there any other discussion from Commissioners? Vice Chair, do you wanna make a motion? Seeing no other discussion, make a motion maybe?
Sure, I will make a motion. Sure, I will make a motion, uh, that we support staff's recommendation. With all conditions.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second, there's a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no, ayes have it. And thank you for coming down. We appreciate it to all the speakers. All right, so that leads us to item number eight. Sean's going to take us through that.
Dustin Shane, staff planner, automated as Brierwood Town Home SP. This is a rezone from RS ten to SP to permit a multifamily residential development. Our recommendation is approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Zoning on the site, single family residential RS ten, proposed for a specific plan. Policy on the site is a little bit of conservation on the north end. That's a, a stream and its buffers. Uh, most of the site is T or all of the rest of the site is T four urban neighborhood maintenance. It's also within the Dickerson North Small Area Plan, uh, which calls for different transportation related improvements in the area, uh, mainly. Here's the, um, site plan that's been submitted. You can see along that northern edge, that's that stream buffer, uh, that stream and its buffer of 75 feet that's required. And then townhomes, uh, throughout the development. Those are private streets shown, a central open space. And then down at the, uh, bottom left hand, bottom right-hand side of the screen, you can see a pedestrian connection, uh, that I'll talk about in a minute. So this is for 84 multifamily residential units, uh, at about 10 units an acre. Um, two to eight unit clusters of townhomes, height limited to three stories and 45 feet. Um, they front on the private streets, except for eight units up along Jones Avenue. Um, and I want to point out, we have a, a condition of approval in there to remove the word right of way from the plan that's shows up several times. These are private drives. Um, access will be taken from Jones Avenue. Um, Oakwood Avenue was identified to be extended per the MCSP and the supplemental policy. Um, but we had the applicant work on a, a exhibit, an engineered exhibit showing the topography, the curvature and the intersection angle that, um, doesn't make this, this feasible. And we had N dot look at that, so that connection won't be made. Sidewalks are shown throughout, uh, the MCSP, uh, completed up along Jones Avenue. Um, there's that pedestrian connection I mentioned to Oakwood, uh, in lieu of that vehicular connection. So that will allow safe access up to Oakwood Park. Um, and then there are multiple off-site transportation improvements that are, um, offered up, two bus stops and a crosswalk, which I'll show on a map on the next slide. Parking is accomplished through, uh, garage and surface spots with some head-in spots along the private drives interior to the site. Minimum requirements being met. And landscaping, there would be a type B along the east, um, with the, where the, a butts a school and then to the south where it's closer, uh, to the existing neighborhood. The off-site improvements that they're showing, there, the four green boxes there, there's a crosswalk up at the north end at Jones and Hart. Um, there in the middle of the screen, that's the pedestrian connection up to Oakwood to allow, um, passage to Oakwood Park. And then down the two, at the bottom are, uh, bus stops that are being improved that are, uh, very close to the development. So looking at the neighborhood maintenance policy, it calls for moderate to high density. Um, this is a larger infill site, which the policy talks about being appropriate for, um, the higher side of the density allowable under this policy. And we've had conversations early with community plans, um, um, looking at that aspect of the policy in relation to this site. Um, the policy calls for high levels of connectivity. Um, and even though we're not, not making that Oakwood connection, um, there's ample pedestrian improvements, uh, being provided on the site and, and off. Um, also in line with connectivity, it's within a five-minute walk to, um, two we-go bus stops, which are being improved. Height is limited to three stories per the policy. Um, policy talks about urban design and circulation, um, and we feel like the plan, uh, does a good job of that with the central open spaces that provide focal points and a unified design idea. And then transitions in form of density. Um, it transitions, it transitions down as you move south, um, into two-unit clusters abutting other, uh, two-unit, uh, a two-unit area to the south that it's adjacent to. Um, so our recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. And so commissioners will open this item for public hearing as the applicant in the room. Come on up. Welcome. State your name and you have 10 minutes and you can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal.
Thanks. Thank, thank you, Lisa. Um, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kevin Gangware, Civil Site Design Group, the engineers for the project, um, and planners, uh, 2305 Klein Avenue in Nashville. Um, so yes, we're here to represent. We do have the developers here, um, if questions arise for them. Uh, but just wanted to ask for your support for this 84-unit infill project. Um, want to point out a few things. The developer has, um, tried to engage the community and, uh, and, uh, we believe that we have the support of most of the, at least the immediate, uh, community and they've knocked on probably over 50, uh, homes to, uh, try to win support and believe that we have the support of most of the immediate, uh, folks. Uh, we also understand that we have the council member's support on this. Um, so this is an 84-unit infill project with private streets. Um, we've had a traffic impact study completed. Um, we don't have, uh, we're not having a, a significant effect on any of the intersections that require any kind of improvements. Uh, we are however, doing quite a bit of off-site improvements related to we-go. We'll do, uh, I think either two or three locations of bus stops and improvements to existing bus stops and creating new bus stops, uh, with, with and for we-go, uh, as well as some ADA, um, crossings at several of the intersections around the neighborhood. Um, and let's see, wanted to, um, uh, these are, these are homes that are, you know, a little smaller in size. They probably are for first-time home build, uh, owners and also for maybe downsizing of empty nesters. Um, so I think the, um, you know, we're chasing the affordable housing kind of crisis that we have in Nashville. So this is, uh, attempting to do some part of that. Um, and then I think lastly, just wanted to say we're super grateful to, um, Dustin, um, and the planning department. They've been very helpful. We've gone through many, many rounds of comments and suggestions and changes, uh, on this. And we're, we're grateful for the planning staff and the, and the N dot staff for, for working with us on that. So we're here to answer any questions that you may have, um, and we'll hold two minutes back to just be able to respond. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And then is there anyone wishing to speak in support of the project? In support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up. And if y'all would line up and everybody's got two minutes and state your name and location? Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Karen Bennett and I reside at 2832 Alhambra Circle. I want to thank you guys for your service because this is a really tough job and I know how hard it can be. As a former council member of this area, it's just a challenge. I've been off the council for about nine and a half years, but I still remember those phone calls and those emails. So, um, so I, I'm not sure what he's talking about, about contacting the community. I live a block away. I haven't heard anything about it until someone left me a flyer in my mailbox from the community expressing concern. Uh, I spoke with Mr. Dustin, Mr. Shane, and, um, you know, we, I respect the fact that they want to improve their property. I, I've got some properties I'd like to improve myself, but when it comes down to it, my real concern is strictly traffic, not on the private, but on the public side of it. This is in a location that's a bottleneck and I don't really feel like the pictures there express that about the public streets around it. Uh, I have a handout if we're allowed to do that. Are we allowed to do that?
Yes, Council.
It's just from, um, the tax assessor's site. And it shows how much of a bottle twist and turn. When you come out of this photo, I'm assuming you all can see the screen as well. When you come out, you've got a split there and then you've got another split before you hit Hart Lane. It's very contoured how it goes around. Uh, when it is morning, when everybody's going to work, when the kids are going to school, which is located behind it, when people are getting off work, they use it as the cutoff from Dickerson Road and Hart Lane. So they're zooming through there and it's twisty-turvy. You've got a crazy little turn there at the far point that would be the west, I guess, of the location. And it, it's just, it's a hard turn. It's three points coming together. So there are always lots of near misses. My apologies. Thank you for your time. Please consider this.
Thank you, Council. Time flies when you're at the planning commission, having fun. Thank you. It's good to see you. Welcome.
Hey, Emma, resident of Jones Avenue. Um, I'm going to kind of piggyback off of the last topic. So since I moved to Jones Avenue a few years ago, I've seen many car accidents and near misses along this blind curve that was, we were last talking about. Um, and I have great concern for the safety of motorists and pedestrians along this low visibility curve already. Adding this development's driveway alongside this concerning area with a coinciding large volume of cars will only increase the risk for accidents along this dangerous stretch of road. I urge the council to continue to conduct traffics, traffic safety analyses of this area before moving forward with this project. My other concern is in regard to the flood plain. Already my property is littered with debris coming down from the road in the area of the proposed development during storms. I have major concern that a storm could cause damage to properties downhill from the development and strongly encourage the council to reconsider such a large development so close to a flood zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, Jason Richard, resident of Hart Lane. I too would love to see official documentation of these 50 residents in support because I have not been contacted about that, nor do I know anybody who has. The middle school and community foot traffic is an extreme concern of mine. There's only two ways to cross Hart Lane currently, and that's Dickerson and Gallatin, of which you know is very far apart. Uh, there's been three accidents on Hart Lane within a quarter mile of the middle school within two weeks, uh, one of which was on February 18th. There was a head-on collision with injury on corner of Hart and Jones. My fence has been damaged three times due to reckless driving and has cost me $3,000 total due to hit and runs. Seen two dogs also be hit and ran, no sidewalk on Jones until halfway to Trinity. With 82 units, minimum of additional 164 vehicles round trip daily, uh, to go through only Jones Avenue. I ask you to consider the safety of our neighborhood and our children. Are these the conditions that you would want your child to endure with daily risk of vehicular fatalities? Lastly, it's just strictly an infringement upon our right to quiet enjoyment. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, good evening, members of the planning commission. My name is Dr. Gabrielle Hood and, uh, I'm a resident, uh, my property, uh, butts, uh, the, the property of, uh, proposed to be rezoned. I'm here to strongly oppose, uh, the proposed rezoning. I appreciate that the commission staff has recommended conditions be placed, uh, on this project, but I do not believe that they go far enough to address the most critical concerns that directly impact my neighborhood. The Dickerson North Quarter Study recommends smaller scale, content sensitive growth that will maintain neighborhood stability, and I don't see how this proposal aligns with that. First, as I've already been mentioned, traffic congestion. This development has only a single entrance, which lies immediately like following at a curve, which again, I, I submitted some comments with some actual photos that I hope you all would look at. Um, estimates show that going from two houses, which is what lies in this area to 84 townhomes, would increase vehicle traffic by around 2,000%. This will create a dangerous bottleneck for those trying to get on Hart Lane. This plan includes no measures to widen the road, improve traffic flow to Hart Lane or enhance traffic safety. Uh, recommended conditions highlight this pedestrian or bike freeway at the back. However, this in no way will alleviate the anticipated increased traffic volume and congestion leaving the complex onto Jones every day. Second, pedestrian accessibility. It shows sidewalk along the development entrance up to Capital View, but this does nothing to address the fact that there are no sidewalks between Hart Lane and the stop sign on Jones Avenue, which is where a majority of the traffic will be. This leaves pedestrians, children, elderly at risk on an already hazardous road. Third, environmental destruction. Uh, it's going to clear over eight acres, majority which is a wooded area, displacing wildlife, enhancing heat island effects, increasing soil erosion and worsening flood risk, uh, for neighboring homes. Simply put, this, uh, requ, this, what has been provided does not provide any solutions to the traffic congestion and concerns that it's going to create. And I respectfully urge you to please reject, uh, this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Jeffrey and I live at the Northwest Corner, uh, right on the Capital View and Jones Avenue intersection. I wanted to highlight, uh, several issues regarding the floodway, stormwater and downstream management that are being overlooked and not fully realized. It's well documented that this development is directly adjacent to a FEMA designated flood hazard area and regulatory floodway. Although some precautions have been noted within the confines of the development's boundaries, there's a concerning lack of foresight in regard for the surrounding lower elevation properties like my own that will be directly affected by greatly reducing the natural landscape. Currently, the area along this western boundary feeds stormwater out from the existing properties onto a steeply curved section of road that is sloped in a manner which directs runoff down the road to the lowest part of Jones Avenue and Capital View intersection, which is located at the northwest corner of this development. The runoff collects and spills into our properties to then join with the floodway from Hart Lane, running behind multiple parcels in parallel alongside the entire length of my and the neighboring properties. During any substantial rainstorm, this floodway sees an immediate and often alarming rise of storm runoff that has proven to cause flooding. Two such occurrences can be seen in videos I submitted online to the public comments. As noted in section 5.5.6 of the Storm Water Management Manual, the floodway is an extremely hazardous area because of the velocity of floodwaters, which can carry debris and potential projectiles, have erosion potential. I've seen this firsthand. New construction, other developments should not result in any increase in flood levels during occurrence. There's a few other, uh, highlights from the manual that I do not feel are being addressed, um, for the sake of my time. I'd like to say that to conclude, I find it unreasonable to think that all the conditions and preventative measures outlined would be guaranteed to mitigate the increased runoff of these 84 units due to the reduction of the landscape's already limited capacity and inherent elevation and slope. The proposed development would drastically exacerbate this issue to a level I can only foresee as being detrimental, not only to my home, but the surrounding properties as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Make sure we get everybody. All right, seeing none, two minute rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to go as quick as I can. Um, um, regarding the public notice, we met the public notice requirements, um, public signs put up, mailers based on what, uh, planning requires us to send out have been sent out. So, uh, the people that have been notified, um, are in accordance with the requirements of the city. Um, the, uh, traffic, this is, uh, 84 units. Um, there has been a multimodal traffic analysis done. Uh, N dot, who's an expert in traffic, has reviewed it and agreed that we're not causing any detrimental concerns related to traffic. Uh, fact is, this, this property is zoned RS 10, um, which allows, uh, up to 35 units, 36 units on this property. The difference in what we would be creating with this SP versus what we're creating, uh, that the RS 10 would allow is a, is an increase of two, uh, peak traffics, um, during the peak morning and peak evening, two extra traffic, uh, cars. So I know that's not the total number. It's 160 something units, uh, 160, uh, cars, but during the peak, it's only a plus two or plus three. So, and then lastly, on the FEMA related, uh, we will meet all the requirements of the metro storm regulations, which are, um, uh, sophisticated, uh, and robust. Um, so we won't be increasing the runoff from the, the peak runoff from this property. Uh, detention and stormwater quality are required by retention. Um, so we'll be meeting those requirements. Um, so that's, that's our response. We're here for any answers to any questions.
Appreciate it. All right. I didn't see the council member. And so seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. And Commissioner Smith, you want to go first?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, I think overall I'm inclined to support the staff recommendation. Um, it seems like it meets the, uh, neighborhood policy. Uh, looks, looks well designed internally as far as, uh, open space and green space. I do have confidence in, uh, metro stormwater, uh, and their regulations to handle, uh, to handle the, the stormwater runoff. I, I hope that it will actually get better, um, than it has been, uh, that, that does happen. Um, one, one thing I did. Um, one, one thing I did brought up that was a good point. Uh, Mr. Shane, did, have we done, or has planning done, or NDOT, like a sightline review on the driveway entrance as far as that, that, just taking account of that curve?
Yeah, they they looked at the, uh, distance to the intersection just to the north, Jones and Capital View. Um, they wanted to stay as far off of that one as they could while also maintaining some distance to the the smaller cul-de-sac just to the south. So you'll see that the road, the private drive entrance is more oriented towards the southern end of the site, and that was for that reason of being, um, trying to get it to the optimum distance from that, uh, kind of strange Y-shaped intersection to the north there.
Thank you. I I'm inclined to to agree with staff. I I think it meets the neighborhood policy. I do think stormwater will be able to handle, um, well, stormwater. And, uh, uh, it is an increase in units, but as I said, it it meets the policy, and that's, that's something we're, we're trying to do to get a mix of, uh, of residential types. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? Councilor? Or who's first? It's Vice Chair? Vice Chair?
So I'm struggling to say this meets the, um, neighborhood maintenance policy. Um, I mean, as I read the requirement, maintain the general character of the existing neighborhood resident, uh, residential neighborhood. Um, these areas will experience some ti- change over time, and that when it happens, it should, um, be made to retain the existing character of the neighborhood, then that these areas are served by a high level of connectivity with complete street networks, and so on. Um, I'm not seeing that with this property. I think that, um, this is a very big change from the surrounding character of the neighborhood. I mean, I I understand it's a much bigger piece of property, so it can accommodate a different development pattern, but you do have primarily single-family, at least in the general area. Um, and then when I, you know, so this, to me, this is a much greater change, um, than what I would expect in normal neighborhood maintenance areas nor what we see, I feel like, in neighborhood evolving. Um, but maybe I'm thinking of a different transect. Maybe the T-four is the, is different, differentiates it a bit. Um, but to me, I'm I'm just having a hard time with that. Plus, the lack of connectivity, um, the lack of sidewalks, it just feels like to me a lot of units on a, on a, in a, in a neighborhood that's not prepared to accommodate, um, this increase. So I guess that's my...
Any other discussion? Give us one second, and we'll, we, we seem to have some technical difficulties. Hey, everybody, we're gonna just take a brief recess just for a second, but, um, only for a few minutes. We're, until we fix the microphone, and then, so we're not gonna... Councilor, come on over, and you can talk in this microphone, and we'll just play musical chairs for a second until we get...
Thank you, Chair. I I just wanted, I I share the concerns that have been already expressed about the policy, meaning the neighborhood maintenance policy, also with the drive, uh, being in the location on the curve that it is. I also share concerns about that. I did have a question about, uh, it was stated during the presentation that the right-of-way was removed, and I I questioned why it was removed. I didn't see that in the condition, so if you could explain that.
Yeah, so, um, NDOT's requirements for separation for public street intersections, um, if they had done a public street down to this spot, it would run afoul of those, of those distance requirements. That, that was one of the major reasons, um, for it to be private. Um, but they are, they're planned to be private streets. They say right-of-way on the plan right now, and our condition is just to to strike that and put private drive, which is what they intended and and we intended.
So all of the streets would then, all, the right-of-way would be removed on all of the streets? All of the drives, not just the main one into the...
Right, all of those roads you see on this plan would be private.
Okay, that, that concerns me as well. So, uh, you know, I I guess you're saying that NDOT proposed that because... Let me make sure I'm clear. I'm not quite clear on why NDOT...
Si- if if these were, if these were to be public, which is what the initial application asked for, that inters- the way, where it intersects with Jones would be too close to where, um, it intersects with Capital View just to the top left-hand side of the screen there. That would run afoul of their, their distance requirements for separations between public intersections. So, but with it being a private drive, though, it does not run afoul of those distance requirements.
Okay, so it's a way to get around those requirements. It, was it ever looked at as to if we could, if the distances could be, meet the requirements, if they changed the entrance into the, into the property?
There are still distance requirements for private drives, uh...
I meant for the public right-of-way. Was it ever looked at, I guess, as to changing the, 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 the entrance or changing the road so that it would meet the requirements for the right-of-way?
Councilmember, let me offer just a little bit of of clarification. So there are distance requirements for public roads. There are distance requirements for private, with safety being a concern either way. Um, it was not just that. For projects like this, where there's not a broader connectivity that's happening, in other words, it's not connecting to other public streets or there is not the opportunity to provide connection to other public streets, a lot of the times, we in planning will say those should be private as opposed to public, because otherwise, Metro as an entity is maintaining what act-as, private driveways, through all intents and purposes. And so we actually rec- said, these should be sort of separate from the distance. These should be private drives, because Metro should not be maintaining roads that don't serve a broader connectivity purpose. So that was sort of another aspect of why we thought it was appropriate for them to be private from a, from a Metro maintenance standpoint.
I understand that, but I guess what my concern is, is can, was it looked at as what, as far as with this particular project of how we can make those roads meet the right-of-way requirements for more connectivity, which is also an objective with these kinds of developments, having more connectivity so that, you know, everyone can benefit from the, from the development and being more connectivity. So it seems like by making them private, not only are we losing the connectivity, but we're also, um, not meeting standards for the, 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 the distance between the roads. And just in my own personal experience dealing with private roads in communities has been a challenge, uh, for communities. So, a- and I, I guess with the private roads, that there would be an HOA required to maintain the roads.
That's correct. There would be an HOA, and we did look at, I think Dustin mentioned in his proposal, and may wanna back up a couple of slides to show a broader view. Um, we did look at, um, the potential to connect, uh, Dustin, if you'll go back, um, another, stop there. That's good. Um, we did, uh, as staff, look at the potential for a connection, an extension of Oakwood Avenue that you see there sort of on the southeastern side, um, and had preliminary, um, had them, had the applicant look at some prelimin- preliminary engineering to pull that road through and extend. Um, there is some pretty challenging topography, um, to bringing that through and bringing it back out to Jones. Um, and so we studied that, and given the sort of existing, uh, network and connection that, that Oakwood already has, did not find that there was a substantial benefit in regards to that, given the difficulty that would take place to, um, ex- to make that extension. So we did sort of, and, and setting up any other type of network, you can't stub out to the east because there's a school. Um, you can't stub out to the north. There's sort of existing homes in a pattern there. You can't stub out to the south because there are existing homes in a pattern there. And so it, there are times, and we always, as you know, want to when we can, set up street networks and cross-connectivity. There are some instances where just, um, the, the patterns of development make it a little bit more challenging. So that's, yes.
Thank you. Um, um, I'll continue to listen, but I'm struggling with, um, support for this one. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Commissioner Leslie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to talk a little bit more, if you could, about the sidewalk and the connection. I heard one of the people in opposition said there would be a break, if I understood it correctly, in the connectivity of the sidewalks. So could you talk about that a little bit more for me, please?
I think the community member was referencing that there are not sidewalks along Jones to the north. So the, the applicants providing sidewalks along Jones for their frontage. And then per the MMTA, which NDOT had them do, they're offering connections to the southeast for pedestrians, bus stops to the south, and then actually a, a crosswalk to the north of the site, um, along at Ha- at Hart and Jones. Um, but they will not be providing a sidewalk all the way up Jones to Hart. Um, just after looking at the MMTA, um, these are the conditions that NDOT felt would be proportional to the development's impact and also helpful to the transportation challenges in the area.
So if I understand it correctly, so that, by what you say, I know that the school is over there, that maybe children would be walking perhaps on a sidewalk, and then half, and then some portion that would not be walking on the sidewalk. I'm, I'm just thinking about it. I, when I say children, I mean anybody, so...
Yeah, the school is actually, um, there's no pedestrian connection over from the school into this site or into this area. Um, but that is, you, what you point out is a challenge for pedestrians in this area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, Commissioner Dunnant? Go ahead. Oh, we're gonna have to try to figure this out. We'll figure it out after this hearing. I'm sorry. We're always struggling with our technology. There you go.
There we go, thanks. Um, I think I'm, I'm sort of leaning towards, uh, agreement with Commissioner Smith on this, and I, I thought the staff's response to our Vice Chair, um, uh, the other, both, other commissioners' comments, um, was really helpful. I think it sounds like this is a unique topography that we're dealing with, and the, um, I, I guess I have a couple of questions. First is the stream. Having a stream that goes all the way across the site sounds like it can complicate trying to put roads and and sidewalks in. And I would like, I guess, your response if that's a correct understanding of this site in particular. Um, and then one of the comments, or several of the commenters in, in opposition, um, referenced stormwater, and I noticed the stormwater has only done a preliminary review. Um, I know we're being called on just to change the zoning and not to address the specific plan, but if you could talk a little bit about what stormwater review is going to entail, um, and if you think that it, it will improve some of the conditions that some of the people in opposition spoke about. Um, and then lastly, just as a general matter, because somebody mentioned tree canopy, um, tree canopy, uh, in, in my view is really critical as we create more density around the city. Um, there's a lot of research that shows how beneficial it is to mental health, physical health, to have tree, trees in your neighborhood. So if, if you all could just talk either generally or specifically about this site, how the, how tree canopy is considered when, especially this, you've, you've mentioned, the staff mentioned that this is a large site. Um, and so when we're talking about the taking large numbers of trees out or adding them in into a new design, um, if you could just speak to how you, how you address tree canopy and if you evaluate it in the context of a neighborhood when you're doing these sites.
Yeah, I think the main thing, um, stormwater at this stage is, it's a preliminary review. They're just looking at, um, acreages and, and, and places on the site that will be able to handle, um, the stormwater infrastructure that the stormwater manual will require them to design and implement at the final site plan. So you'll see there are a few kind of bubbled-out areas where they have said they're gonna put that infrastructure. So that's, that's kind of the level of review at thi- at this point. Um, and then at that final site plan stage, they have to meet kind of those rigorous guidelines. Um, and, and that will, um, those guidelines require them not to increase that peak flow. So they're gonna be looking at what's on the site now, taking into account the tree coverage, how much absorption there is. And then the infrastructure they install is supposed to not increase that peak flow off of there, um, is what it's designed to do. And, and part of that will be staying off of that, that creek and that floodway. There's, there's buffers there, seventy-five foot, that they have to stay out of, uh, to make sure that those waterways are not impaired. And was there anything else?
The, um, the, uh, stream on the, on this particular site, does that, does that impact some of the connectivity and sidewalk issues, or is it really related to other?
Um, they're, they're staying off of that with kind of the roads that they're showing. Um, the sidewalk down at Jones might, um, I, I think there's, there's a culvert or something that that stream goes under that they may have to, you know, build on the side of the road for that sidewalk. Um, but most, mostly they're staying off, out of that stream.
Okay, thank you.
Ma'am, I'm s- ma'am, I'm, I'm sorry. Uh, we'll get it answered, but unfortunately, it's time for the commission to talk. I'm sorry. There was the question about tree canopy?
There's not a specific, um, proportion of tree canopy required to be retained, but there are some, some buffer requirements that are being, um, that are being required and are shown here. And then also, um, trees along the street frontages, and then, uh, trees for the parking screening, and then all, obviously, the undisturbed buffer on the stream, so...
Yeah, they didn't work. He didn't think he could fix that one. Yeah. He didn't think he could fix it. And I have to keep it set, so there will be another open one.
Uh, just wait till she gets the eye.
Yeah, that'd be weird.
I should.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started again. I do apologize. Can everybody hear me out there? Yeah, okay. Apologize for the microphones. We have to have that for, for public hearing reasons, and so I apologize for that. All right, so we're still on discussion, Commissioners, and I did have a question. Lisa, did, I heard some of the, I heard the council ladies say that there was not a public hearing, or was there a public hearing? I got confused. Is that, that's my question. Was, was there a public neighborhood meeting on this particular?
My understanding is that they're not, there has not been a formal organized community meeting.
All right, I just wanted to ask that. All right, so Commissioner Smith, you had a question?
I just want to clarify a little bit, my earlier remarks. I think this project, like a lot we get, is a little torn in that we are in T4 Urban Neighborhood Maintenance, and looked back up just to make sure. And I think this project is kind of torn between two of the principles there, which is that it proposed development be consistent with the character of the area, which I think in, in many parts, it is not. It is a little more dense, a bit more dense than, than the neighboring area. Though I think to the south, those duplexes are about 10 units to the acre and probably matches the density. But I think the other competing pull is the development be consistent with the design principles of the policy. And I think that T4, being a medium to high, uh, high intensity or high density development, it does meet that. I mean, even T4 Urban Neighborhood Maintenance proposed zoning includes R6, several multifamily residential zoning, RM9, RM15, RM20, RS 3.75, which I think is, is right in keeping with this project. And so I think that there's a little bit of push-pull between it's a little, it's a little ahead of its neighbors, and I think at the same time, it, it probably does meet the planning document and, and what, you know, the planning department and, and the city have, have suggested and, and put into practice for, for this area. And I think it's, which side you come down on, I think on, for me personally, I, I'm gonna come down a little bit on the, the policy design and directives and, and, and go, go with that, given that it is T4. I think T3 would probably be a bit too much. And I totally understand that it is a little ahead of its time, maybe. But I'm, I think I'm, I'm still supportive of the recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? Commissioner Clifton, and then Commissioner Marshall.
I, I really think it's an unusual situation when after we can, have talked about it this long, that there's not one or two things that we can get resolved that would make everybody sort of on one side or the other. I think it's confusing, even without our, our issues. I believe that with both sides knowing that there are folks in this commission that are not currently for it and, and some against it, I honestly believe the best course for us is to defer this and encourage the, the develop, the developers and the neighbors to think more clearly about, think further, not more clearly, but think further about what questions they, they won't answer. It's not, it's just, we can't always wait on consensus before we vote, I get that. But I'm unprepared to vote for this today, for a lot of different reasons, and just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Marshall? Everyone, forget, we're gonna have to reset the microphone one more time, and we're gonna really try to get through this case, and then take a break, so that we can fix our, so just be patient with us for a few minutes.
Okay. I will ask all of the Commissioners to be very careful and only press the button to speak one time, okay? Thank you.
All right, thank you. First of all, I appreciate what Commissioner Clifton just said, because that was kind of what my sentiments were gonna be, from a standpoint that I am somewhat conflicted with some of the issues that had been raised by the other Commissioners. I do lean towards supporting the recommendation, but I think that it would be good for all sides to have a little bit more discussion about it and to see if there are some areas where we could come together, where you could come together and make it a win-win for everyone. So at this particular point, I think I lean more toward a deferral, similar to what Mr. Clifton said.
This is in Councilman Parker's district. He's normally pretty engaged. Do we know if he's had any? I don't see any comment from him, or?
We have not received correspondence from the council member.
So if we do defer it, I know we have to give some direction, but it seems a community meeting, I would like to hear from the councilman. I don't know if there's other things that we've identified that we would want staff to look into. Anything else?
Yes, it, it is, it is al, thank you for that. It is always helpful to the staff if, if projects are deferred, if there are specific things that the Commissioners have concerns about, that you can let us know what those are, so that we can either research them or have conversations further about them. So please, and the things that I have right now is that there is a desire for a community meeting. So if there's anything beyond that, in regards to the design of the proposal, please do let us know.
Vice Chair, with that said, we will need a motion to defer. I did hear some safety concerns on one of the outside roads. I can't, I don't have my readers, I can't tell what road that is, but. What road is that, Lisa? Jones. That might be something to, to look at as well. I, I, I'm, I'm with Commissioner Smith. I do, so, just so everybody knows, on the stormwater issue, we take stormwater very, very seriously. And the news, we have stringent standards, as the developer said, and I, I believe that it potentially, I know it seems sometimes that normal, without no development versus, the stormwater could potentially help the area, stormwater improvements potentially. Depending on the topography of the area, the stormwater improvements have been greatly increased in the last few years. So anything else, Commissioners, on what to, for the staff? Commissioner Dundon, and then the council lady.
I guess I'm just not completely clear on, I mean, I think we were in agreement we needed deferral, but it sounds like there's not a lot of concrete information we're asking for from staff. So, and maybe Vice Chair, if there's, should we ask for more detail on consistency with policy than, than was provided to us in, in this packet? Would that help the Commissioners? Like, I guess I just would like to see some more detail on what, what specifically we're asking the staff to do, other than hold a community meeting.
Yes, that sounds good.
Thank you. Just one more question about the Old View Street connection, or lack thereof. Is, is it a stub street? Oh, turn mine off.
Yes, Oakwood is currently, the, the, the right-of-way goes all the way to the property line. It's sort of split between this property and Metro School's property. But the pavement is not built the entire length. It was, it was intended likely to extend by the way that it was constructed. It's not constructed as a permanent dead end.
Okay, thank you. So, but you have already, the staff has already looked at the possibility of that connection. And if that, that is the case, then if, if we could add that, looking at the safety issues on Jones, to address the concerns with the curve and, and the private, and the, and the distance between the streets, if we can revisit that. Thank you.
I just want to make sure, if I'm looking at this picture here, this black line right here on the left side, is that, does that indicate the boundary of the property? See that dark black line, this curve, on Jones Avenue?
Yeah, that's the property boundary.
And on that Jones Avenue, that, that will have sidewalks, right? And what does that?
Yes.
Okay, and what does that triangle indicate right there, at the top of the black line? It's a little black triangle.
That's just where the, the bubble, the, the engineer just called our attention to. something they changed on the plan.
Okay, so is it safe to say that after the black line and we're going up the other way, there's no sidewalk right there?
Correct.
Okay. I'm turning it off.
Vice Chair, you want to make a, any other discussion? Let's make sure commissioners, I want to make, I try to look both ways, Commissioner Leslie. Any other discussion? I think the Vice Chair can make a, a motion. Vice Chair?
I will make a motion for a two-meeting deferral to address the list of items that we have provided to Ms. Milligan. Yes.
Okay, I have noted for the applicant to host a community meeting, to look at safety concerns with the intersection of the drive and Jones, to look at, to provide additional details on how this proposal meets the adopted land use policy, to reevaluate the Oakwood extension, and then also to look at the separation of the drive from the two existing intersections. And hearing from the council member. Yes, okay.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second? Any discussion? All, oh, Commissioner Clifton?
I feel a little silly saying this since I messed up last time, and it's not that critical, but it's just, it could leave the wrong impression if we don't clarify a little bit about the council member's involvement. It would be great to have whatever he wants us to know, but it is just as reasonable as we all know for council to defer to hear on technical issues from us first. And it's not meant to be any sort of slight that he hasn't come down here with a point of view. And I think that's, that's really worth saying.
All right, so we had a motion, we had a, we had a motion for a two-meeting deferral. We had a second, we're on discussion, any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Pose no, ayes have it, two-meeting deferral. So commissioners, we, the staff has talked to the applicant for item number 23. If y'all will look at item 23 real quick, and they have asked instead of to hear this on public hearing, they would like to defer. And Lisa, I'm assuming that's one meeting or two? One meeting. Okay, so commissioners, the applicant has asked the staff, has requested to the staff to defer item number 23, one meeting. Is there a motion to defer item 23, one meeting? It's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Pose no, ayes have it, item 23 is deferred, one meeting. So that leads us with three more items, and I believe that we can try to get through at least one more item and then we'll take a break to try to figure out the microphones. But commissioners, this is what we're going, that what I would like to try to do, instead of continuing to push the buttons, we're going to, the podium right here by the staff, we'll have the staff, we'll just keep that microphone on and the staff can present from that microphone. Then if you have a question, you just go up to the microphone. And I know this is not normal, but I believe that this will, and it will make me look towards you, Commissioner Leslie. I won't look to my left. So, so we'll keep that microphone on at the podium. And I'm going to keep mine on and I'll be really quiet. Or do you think I should? I'll turn it off.
Okay, we're just going to lay, if you come up to spade, just lay this on.
Good evening commissioners. My name is Jeremiah, presenting item number 18 on the agenda tonight. This is a request to permit a multifamily residential development. And staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The approximately is open 74 acre site is classified as a vacant residential land and located approximately 242 feet east of Walton Oak Drive. The site was, the site has frontage on Walton Lane, which is classified as a collector avenue in the major collector street plan. Based on acreage alone, the existing zoning would permit a maximum of three to four slots for a total of six units. The site is also within 2.15 miles of Saunders Avenue West and 2.3 miles of Galatin Pike to the east, which are classified as a collector avenue and arterial believer respectively in the major collector street plan. The site is within 2.5 miles of two Rico transit stops along Galatin Pike. The surrounding zoning districts include one and two family residential, multifamily residential with a planned unit development overlay district, single family residential and commercial services. The property directly to the north is open space, which is used as the National Cemetery. The subject site abuts a period with multifamily, multifamily residential uses that have developed directly to the east. The site is located within the M33 Suburban Neighborhood Maintenance Policy Area. T3NM is intended to maintain the general character of developed suburban residential neighborhoods. T3NM areas will experience some change over time, primarily when buildings are expanded or replaced. When this happens, effort should be made to retain the existing character of the neighborhood. T3NM areas have an established development pattern consisting of low to moderate density residential development and institutional land uses. Enhancements may be made to improve pedestrian, bicycle and vehicular connectivity. The plan proposes eight multifamily residential units. Units 1 to 4 are oriented towards Walton Lane, while units 5 to 8 are located in the area and are oriented around a common open space. The proposed units share access to a private drive from Walton Lane. Units 1 to 6 have garage parking, while units 7 and 8 are surface parked. Units 1 to 4 are proposed with a maximum height of two stories and 35 feet, while units 5 to 8 have a maximum height of two stories and 30 feet. Sidewalk connections are provided on Walton Lane, as shown on the, on the site layout. A 20-foot and 10-foot landscape buffer is proposed along the southern line and resting line, and resting property line respectively. Overall, staff finds that the proposed SP meets the goals of the T3NM policy. The location and relationship of the site between the existing single-family neighborhood to the west and BUD development, multifamily development to the east may support the increase in intensity proposed with this SP. The proposed height of all units at two stories is consistent with the policy guidance of 23-story tall buildings. The site has access to existing mass transit with two Rico transit stops located along Galatin Pike and proposed sidewalks consistent with the MCSP, which will enhance the pedestrian environment and provide alternative modes of transportation. Staff finds that the proposed SP is consistent with the goals of the T3NM policy and therefore staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Thank you.
All right, so we're going to keep three microphones on and then commissioners, if you'll just, when, when we get to that portion, if you'll just go up to the, okay. So, thank you sir, appreciate that, and we'll open this item up for public hearing as the applicant in the room. Welcome. You have 10 minutes and you can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Michael Garrigan with Dell Associates. I represent the, the owners of this property. This is one similar to a couple others that I presented previously to, to this body where we have two larger duplex eligible lots. I think the staff report says six units, but that's just based on the gross acreage and, and reality with the policy, it's, it's two lots, two units per. So the, the discussion, decision, the struggle is for large homes or do we, do we look at it for a potential rezone and, and do smaller homes, more attainable homes? That seemed appropriate in this case, just simply due to the RM20 that's immediately to the east, that's the developed townhome development directly to the east and then directly to the west, you get into the single and the two-family development. So looks like a good transition lot. It is in Council Lady Benedict's district who, who's, who's very high on, on the, the attainable housing and the incremental density, finding appropriate locations to, to increase density, to increase the market base, decrease the mass, decrease the height and decrease the square footage to therefore help keep the, the housing prices down. These units are all restricted to two stories, whereas the current zoning does allow three stories. And each one of these are structured specifically such that its heated and cooled square footage will be in the range of 1,600 to 1,800 square feet. We tried to set it up, you know, in a way that it, it could appear just like it would under the two-family, potentially even better, just in the bird's eye view, you've got the attached units facing Walton that present as, as one structure space and then the other two-family units. So that, you know, likely that would be one footprint where units one and two are shown under the current base zoning. And then tuck the incremental density then behind it, smaller heights, so that you don't see them from the street. The, the other positive that the SP provides is increased requirements, grading permits required, which is going to increase the stormwater management requirements versus the infill stormwater management, or the infill requirements, which are far less, which the two-family lots would be governed under. Again, the heights, I think keeping them to two stories, as a designer, I, I, I get tired of third-story products and neighborhoods. And, and it's, you know, at the end of the day, the property is surrounded by a lot of Gallatin to the east, you've got Bradley Parkway just to the south, Walton itself is a collector street, you've got the RM20 immediately to, to the east there. So it's not just a grab any lot in any neighborhood and, and attempt to do some incremental zoning, it's doing it in a smart way where it makes sense, and in this case, we certainly think it does. So I'll reserve two minutes and thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it, and we'll reserve two minutes for rebuttal. Is there anyone wishing to speak in support of the project? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up, welcome and appreciate y'all being patient with us and state your name.
Excuse me, yes, Charles Webster, and I live on Walton Lane. Been there for 15 years and we don't, we're not opposed to building anything, but eight units, that's a small apartment complex. The one that is actually right next to that, that was there long before any of the houses on that side of the street were there. It was originally a part of a farm. So I believe that changing this and putting in eight units would basically change the layout of our entire little area there. And we've got a lot of homes on the other side of the street that are older homes, really nice, larger lots, a lot of country music stars lived there in years past. We're in a really, really nice area, and I just think that eight units in that smaller area would really impact us negatively, as well as in my yard, stormwater, when we get a really large rain, comes and washes down, across two yards through my yard, down into the back. So I think that probably would become more of a concern if we add additional units and grade that lot down. But thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming down. Welcome.
Ernest Morse, 1537 Bowes Way, directly behind this lot. I mean, I'm all about doing some building around the area. This lot has sat vacant. My wife and I moved into our property February of 2020. We started up a little family there. It's going good, we got a little nine-month-old at the house. And we have a direct eyes shot from our backyard of the Quail Creek condos, which we were a little apprehensive about when first purchasing our home, but it's, it's, it's residential still, it's, it's owner occupied for the most part, from what we understand. It's a little bit of a concern for this, I don't know if I caught what this would be zoned as, as far as that goes. So that would be a good question, I guess. A concern would be like Charles said, was stormwater. This is one of the highest elevations in this area, it's on the hilltop. It would do stormwater through his yard, it'd probably also throw, flow through to the south directly into the yards behind it, which would include mine. There's also just, I guess, you know, that, that street in general, the developer mentioned it was a good transitional lot. Everything behind that, like you said, is a single-family. I just don't know what it would transition into. And I don't, I don't see those types, types of homes popping up in that area. They are large lots, I mean, I guess it could eventually, but via eyesore. One of the members up here had spoken about, in the last hearing on Jones Avenue or whatever that was, about greenery and how that lightens people's spirits. I agree on that. Fall buildings do not though. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, two-minute rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of things I just wanted to point out is what the SP will provide that the, the current base zoning does not. The SP is providing landscape buffers to the south as well as to the west for the, for the neighboring lots to buffer against them. And once again, also the, the two stories that are restricted here are going to be far less visible than the three stories the current zoning allows. And, you know, again, back to stormwater, that is, if it's not traffic, it's stormwater in this county and, you know, like I try to tell, you know, I graduated college in 2002 and I don't think that stormwater existed prior, prior to that. So that's how I try to present it to different neighborhoods is it, it really wasn't a thing until the early 2000s. And so we are behind the eight ball when we have water mains that are 100 years old and we didn't even think about stormwater until 20 years ago. and we didn't even think about stormwater until 20 years ago. But we are, I liked one of the prior engineers, robust. Stringent is the word I like to use. It is, we have very, very stringent stormwater regulations. And it takes longer to get through that process than a rezoning takes. So every i's dotted and t's crossed. And this SP would trigger those requirements, whereas the current zoning and two-family lots would not. So I would definitely venture to say, I heard it stated prior, that the stormwater could be improved. We know it's a net zero at a minimum under the grading permit. The could-be improvement is always a possibility. But the, it is a tremendous improvement when compared to the infill regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. And I did not see the council person. So seeing no one else wish to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. And Commissioner Leslie, you want to go first, but you gotta go to the microphone. You gotta. Yeah, up there. Yeah, we got a whole new situation.
Don't touch it?
No, don't touch it, just.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for recognizing.
You gotta, you gotta.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, for recognizing me on this other side. Councilperson Benedict has come before us many times, talking about how she would, we have these big lots, these big houses, and she wanted to divide them into smaller lots. I looked at it, and I understand that, you know, when I was an itty-bitty baby, we used to have these big lots, right? These acre lots and things of the nature. But I'm a native Nashville, and things are changing. So I looked at the policy, it looks like it's in line with policy. And so I'm prone to recommend what the staff recommends. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Commissioner. I know the commissioners keep me straight all the time, so I appreciate it. Any other discussion? You'll have to really want to speak. Any other discussion? We'll need a motion. Commissioner Leslie, you want to? But you'll have to go back up to the, exercise.
I make a motion to approve the staff recommendation with conditions and disapprove without all conditions.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? There's a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, ayes have it, and is adopted. So commissioners, we have been here two hours fighting with the machine and the microphones. And so I think it would probably be great to take a vice chair. If you're good, I would suggest we take a 10, 15-minute break, and then we'll come back and finish our last two items. All right. Seeing no objection, we'll be back in about 10 minutes.
Here are concerns. I operate DAD's Towing Service and Western National Record Service. We're a zone company for the Metro Police Department, the Tennessee Highway Patrol, Goodison Police, Bellevue Police, several different entities. We perform the emergency duties when required. I did purchase this with the understanding that I thought at the time that it was approved for that, and obviously it wasn't. So if you look at this, you can see that to the left of it in this picture is a tow company. Its grandfather then, Browns, originally established it 50-plus years ago. If you look to the right, of course, originally on this was a bar, too, that it, to my understanding, burnt down several years ago. To the right of it is a bar, a very small bar, and across the street from this bar is another tow company that operates a heavy diesel repair shop. To the left of this tow company, which is the Browns, Browns is a lodge, and across the street from it is another automotive shop. To get to residential, you've got to get quite a ways behind it. As you can see, there's no houses shown in this at all. It's actually perfect for this type business. Van Diver comes off of Eagan, and Eagan, and it circles around. There's two entrances. It exits to the rear of it, and it exits to Old Hickory Boulevard, so there's plenty of room to go around it. I mean, it's absolutely perfect for this use. It's a situation where basically it is, it would be used for vehicles that are damaged. Some of them are not damaged, but some of them are just, have to be towed in for breakdowns as well. These vehicles are not permanently there. It's not like a salvage yard. They are moved at a regular pace. The pace is, you know, as a vehicle's brought in, so the police department gives us a call to pick up a vehicle. You know, within the three-day period, we have to find out, notify, find out who the owner of the vehicle is. Certified males have to be sent out, and they have 30 days to pick it up. In the 30-day period, if they're not picked up, they have to be disposed of. The insurance companies on the vehicles that are wrecked, they're very efficient about picking them up very quickly, so it's not like they're sit there for a long period of time. So we would greatly appreciate your consideration for approving it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you all coming down. We'll save two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition now? Nope? All right. Seeing no one, do you want to not have a rebuttal? Sorry, have you said everything?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Allen, do you want to go first? Thank you.
Thank you. And just hearing the presentation and how this application aligns with the policy, I tend to agree with the staff's recommendation to disapprove. I understand that there are, or I hear that there are other businesses in this vicinity that are similar to what is going to be proposed, but just looking at this in comparison to the policy and not necessarily what's there already, is, I guess, would, I would, would be the fair judgment, I guess. So I would be inclined to move forward with staff recommendation to disapprove.
Thank you, Commissioner. And why don't you stay there? We'll see if we have any other discussion, and if not, we can make a motion. Is there any other discussion? Okay, commission done?
Yeah.
Yep.
Sorry, thanks. So, is it on? Yeah. So it looks like the proposed zoning of IR has light manufacturing, and so does the existing zoning. It just, this is one of those that it does seem, I mean, even in the staff report, it says there's auto-oriented uses around it, commercial and auto-oriented uses. And it certainly is clear in the picture that it's directly adjacent to something that it sounds like it wants to be used for. But I'm just wondering if there's a way to do an SP. Though, I mean, it sounds like the concern is that it's not consistent with policy because of the more heavy industrial uses that could occur under the IR versus the commercial services existing zoning. So I'm just wondering if there's some way to be consistent with policy and maybe avoid some of the uses in an IR zone that we're concerned are not consistent with policy, just given the uses around it.
Sure. So I think this is, this is likely a situation where we have some existing uses that are also inconsistent with the policy, which is not unusual.
Legally non-conforming.
There, because the one that's next door is legally non-conforming, so it's not permitted in the CS. And so we have sort of CS, which is not consistent with the policy, asking to go to something that's more inconsistent, and then dealing with some non-conforming uses. It's a, it's a quite unusual situation, just sort of given the intersection of policy and zoning here, because we have some uses that already exist that aren't permitted by the zoning. Does that make sense? There could be, if there was an SP to narrow down the uses, it still would not likely be consistent with policy, because you've got other uses that are there that are not consistent with the policy. The existing tow, tow uses are not consistent.
Sorry. I feel very formal coming up here. So I, that's helpful. I guess it's just, how, and, you know, how, what do we do in these situations in the past? Like when, if there's, if, because it seems like this is an issue of fairness. If there's uses immediately around it of this, they were saying are not supposed to be there, but they are there. Are we trying to avoid just even more non-conforming uses essentially coming in? Is there going to be an effort to remove the ones that are there? Just if you could give me a little summary of what we do.
Sure. So the existing, the existing uses are what we call legally non-conforming. So that means that they existed or were legal prior to the current zoning. And so they are, per state law and per the zoning code, allowed to continue to operate. If that use was to cease operations for 30 months or more, per state law, then they would not be able to re-establish that use. And so it's granted legal protection because something changed that made it legally non-conforming, so it is granted that protection. It's not that there is an active effort to remove those businesses. They are just allowed to continue operating, so long as they don't cease operations.
And Commissioner, our counselor, our commissioner, our commission lawyer is nodding her head yes, that is a correct interpretation. So, any other discussion? Wait, Stuart? You could, no, you gotta go, yeah. Commissioner Clifton, you're recognized.
I don't, I don't know that this is, I'm not sure that this means I'm going to vote for this, but I just have to state the obvious, which is, when you look, look at a photo of, of property someone's just bought, and it wasn't available for what, what they wanted it for, you think normally, how could they do that? And then you look at this picture and say, that's how they could do that. I mean, it, I don't think I've seen anything quite like this. I'm afraid, though, that if we started making exceptions like this, not limited, because this would be a rezoning that could stay forever, no matter what else came up around it, or could keep things from coming up around it. So I'm thinking I'll probably go with the staff recommendation, but I just, I wanted to say, this is so unusual because it is, it is all, from a common sense point of view, I'm sure it's, it looks to folks, and certainly owners, that what, what could this harm? But I think it could in terms of precedent, things like that.
Hold on, Commissioner, stay there for a second. I think we might, is there any other discussion? Commissioner, would you be willing to make a motion?
I just move, we approve staff recommendation and disapprove this bill.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second? Any other discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye. Pose no, ayes have it, and it's disapproved. All right. So that leads us to our last public hearing case, which is... Item 21. Selena.
Yep. Okay, this is item 21 on your agenda. The request is to rezone from AR-2A to RM-9NS. Staff's recommendation is to approve. The 6.3-acre parcel is located near the intersection of Old Hickory Boulevard and Burkett Road. The site has frontage along Old Hickory Boulevard. The property has been zoned AR-2A since 1974, and there is one single-family residence on the parcel. Surrounding zoning districts include CS, R-10, and AR-2A, with surrounding land uses being primarily vacant land and single-family residential uses. There are two policies on the site. Primarily, you have suburban neighborhood evolving, which is intended to create and enhance suburban residential neighborhoods with more housing choices, improve pedestrian, bicycle, in particular, connectivity. And there is also a little bit of conservation in the rear of the site, which is intended to preserve environmentally sensitive land features through protection remediation. to preserve environmentally sensitive land features through protection remediation. On this site, there's a stream on the rear of the property. As the site is located within the T-3NE policy, the proposed zoning district permits residential uses at a density of nine units an acre. This supports a suburban residential pattern at a higher density than classic suburban neighborhoods consistent with the T-3NE policy guidance, and encourages a diverse mix of housing types. The proposed NS designation prohibits both short-term rentals, both types of short-term rentals, thus ensuring that any future units built will be used for needed housing. And finally, the site is located along Old Hickory Boulevard, which is a collector avenue as identified by the major and collector's street plan, which can support a moderate increase in density. And so for those reasons, staff recommends approval.
Thank you. And so commissioners will open this item for public hearing. Is the applicant in the room? Welcome. Come on up. State your name. You have 10 minutes. Who are you with? Save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal.
Got it. Connor Gilbert, TTO, civil site engineers and owner representative. We originally, I'd like to start this off, we originally requested for this property to be rezoned to an RM-20, which is kind of top of that allowed density for the neighborhood evolving district or community character policy that we fall within. Met with Selena and Andrea, and they provided some very good feedback, and ultimately, we negotiated to bring that down to the, to lower end of what is allowed by the policy in the area, and tagged on the NS designation to it as well. I appreciate the feedback and think that we've got a good product for the area. We have discussed with some local community members that have came in today and believe that setting up a community meeting with them, we've reached out to the council member for the area a number of times, but haven't been successful in establishing contact, so have that information now, and that's how we plan to move forward. So that's about it.
Thank you. And we'll save two minutes for rebuttal for you. All right. Anyone wishing to speak in support of the project? Seeing none, anyone in opposition? Come on up. Everybody get two minutes apiece and state your name and where you're from.
Good evening. Sent the request in for the five minutes on behalf of the community.
Yeah. Give her five.
Twanich, Kenridge Community Club.
Hold on, hold on, let's.
My bad, sorry.
There we go. There we go. Go ahead.
Sorry. I talk fast. I request on behalf of the community that you disapprove this request for rezoning or that you defer it for 90 days to accommodate the need for community conversations. Our council member advised that she notified the chair that she does not support this multifamily rezoning at this location. We have previously discussed a Kenridge buffer with the planning staff. This proposal is not consistent with community desires regarding buffers and feathering into our community. NDOT has confirmed previously that traffic studies have a pretty limited radius, which doesn't take into account all the traffic. The developer advised that he's never heard of us, which tells me they haven't really researched the area in which they wish to build. You can find us by reaching out to any other nearby developments or by asking any, for asking for community groups in the area. We have a wide presence. I wish planning staff could provide info on community groups and areas seeking development, but I understand why they don't. As you know, our community never supports straight rezoning. We are working hard with the adjacent developer closer to Burkitt Road to come up with a plan that meets the needs of the community and the developer. This was Dan McVicker and Roy Dale. That took numerous meetings and compromise and conversations. The number of units we ended up agreeing on and the manner they will be built in is going to cost him less and work better to meet the needs of the community. We're continuing that with another developer on Kenridge Road. It's headed towards being a great development that meets the needs of the community and the developer, and again, it's going to cost them less. We've done the same thing with other developers. It takes time, it takes patience and meetings. In this instance, there have been zero communications, nothing for us to review, except a desire to put another 50-plus homes where there currently is one. This applicant, if the Google search gave me the right information and website, doesn't show that they've done anything else in the area that would complement our area that we can even look at. I would further offer that changing zoning like this without community engagement actually harms the community, because we don't get the opportunity to enter into agreements for improvements ahead of time that are really needed by the community, such as next door, where we're going to be taking three driveways down to just one, which is really good for the community. So I request again, on behalf of the community, that you disapprove this request for rezoning or defer it for 90 days. We're happy to schedule meetings with them. We want to work to accommodate the need for community conversations. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Come on up.
My name is Steve Johnson. I live on Battle Road. Been there 34 years. I go past this site every day. There's been no public neighborhood meeting regarding this project. Most people in our neighborhood don't know anything about it. It's not in keeping with the neighborhood character, and the Kenridge community has developed guidelines. Those have not been addressed. It's a terrible place for a driveway. The planning commission, let's see, estimates there would be, I believe it was 255 trips a day in and out of this driveway. There's two curves in the road there, which you see better on the other map, the one with the plots, not the satellite view, shows the two curves. And going west, there's a steep hill. There's a telephone pole, which is right at the bottom where Old Hickory Boulevard meets the bottom of the map there. There's wrecks every year there, and sometimes two or three. I lived there for 34 years, so I see them. This increase would be a 5,500% increase in density. The existing zoning allows tripling. We could put three single-family houses in there. I think that's much more reasonable than a 5,500% increase, because the high school in this area, Kenridge High, is over capacity, and the elementary school is at capacity. The road is narrower than is now allowed for roads.
Thank you, sir.
And I think that covers it.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Thanks. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Amanda. I live in Old Hickory Boulevard, right in the lovely wreck zone. All of the roads around there, Burkitt, Battle, Old Hickory Boulevard, they always say that we can always take on more infrastructure. They put so many homes down at the other end, so many homes behind us. They're looking to do behind here, where Old Hickory Boulevard and Burkitt meet. They're looking to do more over here. But what they don't get is, there's, these are two-lane roads. It's the type of road, I can't remember the specific name, you can't put speed bumps, you can't put stop signs, you can't put street, you can't put any lights. So we have, there's no buffer on the sides of the roads. People are wrecking right in front of my house and her house on at least multiple times a year, probably about at least four to five, and totally blocks the roads. There's no way to get around, let you go way, way, way around. But we just can't handle that much more. I would urge, and I'd love to know, what do you guys do with all the animals? I mean, we're supposed to be an ecosystem. We require animals, we require people, but I would also like to know, where do you guys put all of these animals when you take out all of this greenery? But I would like to defer or disapprove. We really need community meetings. We are a very involved community in Kenridge area, and we can do multiple meetings by Zoom, and we have. So I'd love for you guys to defer it and let us do these meetings to try to come up with some kind of a agreement that everybody can handle. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Come on up.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for joining tonight. I'm Amanda. I'm Amanda's neighbor, and my neighbors have spoken about the telephone pole and these being dangerous curves, and the roads are narrow. Kenridge is growing fast. We need to slow down and take our time. Speaking of wrecks, the telephone pole gets hit quite a bit there on Old Hickory and Battle, which is across the street, would be my son's bus stop, so constant accidents. And then if you get weather the hill down there, where the stoplight is, where Old Hickory and Old Hickory meet, there's always people going into the ditch. Was pulling someone out of the ditch with a snowstorm with a tow strap this season. My neighbor's property is just over six acres, and so if they're wanting to rezone that to have nine multi-units per acre, that's at least 54 multifamily homes. Our road system can't handle it. It needs, I'm opposed to rezoning it and keeping it agricultural. And as far as the animal situation, my home, there's at least two coyote packs that come through my property. There's deer, turkeys, foxes, and doing all of this development at such a quick pace and just shoving it in there, you're displacing a big ecosystem, and not to mention old-growth trees that are beautiful on our property. We live in this area because we don't want the sidewalks or our front yard. If we wanted that, we would live in the neighborhood behind us. So again, I'm opposed. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, two-minute rebuttal.
Connor Gilbert, TTO, civil site engineer, owner representative. We hear the feedback from the community. We've gone through every channel that's publicly available for us to reach out to the community, so I do apologize that it may look bad that we haven't hosted that. It's just been difficult to establish contact. I've shared contact information with the community club as of tonight, so we fully intend to move forward with meetings to kind of find some, somewhere to, a middle ground to agree upon. The developer has multiple townhome developments, mostly in the Clarksville area, so this is something that they're very familiar with. They would bring a good product to the area. And I mean, if the commission finds it necessary for us to defer for a community meeting, we do understand that that would need to be held before, being before city council, but if the commission finds that we need to defer a meeting for meeting with the community, then I think that we're willing to do so.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And not seeing the council lady here, I declare the public hearing closed, seeing no one else wishing to speak. Council lady, you want to start us off? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I want to thank the applicant for listening to the community. I want to thank the community members who came out today to speak. I think it would be prudent to, for deferral, so that there could be more community engagement and more opportunities to work together on this. Also, I would like to hear from the council member as well. I know the council member, Lee, has been very engaged. He has a lot of community meetings, so would like to see that happen as well. So I support a deferral. Not sure if we need a two-meeting deferral. Yeah, I'm not sure that one-meeting deferral is enough time to do all those things, so I would recommend a two-meeting deferral on that.
And council lady, we'll, let's see if there's any other discussion, and maybe you can make a motion. Any other discussion or, we're, okay, council lady, why don't you go ahead and lead us?
I move for two-meeting deferral.
That's proper motion. Is there a second? Second? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no, ayes have it, it's deferred two meetings. So commissioners, that leads us to other business, historic. Commissioner Smith? We're going to have to line the commissioners up.
The MHZC took up the Marlin Meadows overlay, which I believe we will hear, it sounds like in April. That did pass our commission with some, some against, but mostly for. And there was, just as an update, there was a pretty wide-ranging discussion of upcoming council bill affecting the Metro Historic Commission, the Metro Historic Zoning Commission, and their relationship to the planning department. The MHZC appointed a committee to give a little feedback on that. It looks like they met last night and had a little bit of feedback. No, no concrete amendments, but just expressing a desire to maintain its historic mission and efforts for its preservation in Nashville. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We really appreciate you serving on the Historic Commission and taking care of us over there, and thank you for the update. Parks, there's none of Parks update. Commissioner Hanley's not here. And executive committee report. The one thing I was asked to talk about is the next meeting, and so Lisa's going to talk.
If everyone, I know Kelly has already reached out regarding the March 13th meeting. If everyone could let her know pretty quickly whether or not you'll be able to attend. We do have a bit of a conflict with spring break, and so we always want to make sure that we are able to achieve forum, so please do let Kelly know as soon as possible, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you, Lisa, and I know that I have to let her know as well, but please, if you can figure out your schedules, and I know that everybody's busy and has kids and on spring break, and so we really appreciate that. Director's report, is there anything else, Lisa, that you want to mention? Nope? So that leads us to legislative update. Anything else? Nope? So seeing no other business, do I hear a motion adjourned? Re-journed.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.